Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you for your patience. It is 9:34 in the February meeting of the Wood County Board Supervisor's Roll Call to Order. Morning, everyone. Thank you for being here. The clerk has taken roll call. We have a forum. At this time, I would ask Supervisor Lightner to come forward for the invocation and ask the body to remain standing afterwards for a further meeting.
Morning. Those of you who will, please join with me in a word of prayer. Lord, we are here on this earth, but for a short time. There is no higher calling than to serve and protect. We thank you for the vision, the insights, and the ability of our county's department heads. We ask you to watch over the hundreds of county employees as they go about their daily duties. To the tens and thousands of residents of Wood County, when they find themselves in a time of need, guide them to these doors, especially in the winter months when the living is harder. And finally, to the policymakers of this governing body, guide us in our deliberations. Help us rise above our petty differences and regional loyalties to see the greater good. We are here on this earth, but for a short time, and the needs are many. We thank you for those in the county community who share and protect the residents of Wood County. We pray this in your name.
Amen. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Supervisor Lightner. January minutes. Motion by Hamilton. Second by Lightner. You have a motion on the floor to approve the January minutes. Is there any additions, corrections, subtraction from those minutes? See none, all in favor. That motion indicate by saying "aye."
Aye.
All who say "no"? Thank you. Excusable today. We have Supervisor Winch. And just an update, from what I know is that apparently Supervisor Winch is approving and preparing to come back shortly from the coroner's report. He said that he may come back. He may not be ready to take over his committee yet, but he anticipates coming back soon. So that's good news. Yeah. Oh, and the coroner is his death son. (laughter) So, very good. Long does mine. Since we're in the mood this morning, I don't sense the last town association had a moment of silence for a bit longer. Mr. Chairman, we like that.
I loved it. I think Mr. Chairman touched some slack. I mean, we don't see you in a tie too often.
Thank you. Thank you for noticing Supervisor. So, back to excusable. We have Mr. Supervisor Winch. Resignations, we have two. And appointments, we have two. We can take them all in one voice vote with no objection from the floor. We have Supervisor Fisher resigning as County Board Chaplain. Supervisor Zaleski resigning from the North Central Wisconsin Workforce Development Board. Appointments to those two openings are, in both cases, Supervisor Durkoo, who slides back into his old job as County Board Chaplain, and also appointed to the North Central Wisconsin Workforce Development Board. Without objection, we would... Is that a motion?
Yes.
A motion by Hamilton, second by Lightner. We have a motion on the floor to second it to approve those resignations and appointments. Is there any discussion? See none, all in favor of those, indicate by saying "aye."
Aye.
Thank you. Public comments. Is there anyone at this time that wishes to make public comments? Vice Chair Roser.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In... Oh, you have to start my three minutes while I make sure I don't go over time.
Yes, absolutely.
In light of the fact that this county board passed a motion last month to put two non-binding advisory referendum questions on the ballot, I would like to speak to that. Most of you know that I work casually on Three North as a cardiac medical surgical nurse. We have some very competent individuals that work with us. A cardiologist by the name of Dr. Sharif Raschela recently put an article out, it was published in November of 2018, called "The Cardiovascular Effects of Marijuana." And I am concerned that there will be an emotional vote on this and not a knowledgeable vote, so I would just like to share with you a few comments from this article. We see on Three North the effects of marijuana, and job security is always something we think about, but there are a couple of things that are vascular complications following marijuana use that we see as medical staff or nursing staff on Three North. And I'm just going to read through that list. Atrial fibrillation, ventricular dysrhythmia, strokes, chest pain called angina, myocardial infarction, which is the medical term for heart attack, heart failure, Raynaud's phenomenon, which is a vascular complication of the tips of the fingers. People with Raynaud's suffer from cold hands all the time, a rise in systolic blood pressure, which is that top number on your blood pressure, and sudden death. This is an excellent article that goes into the pharmacologic effects of marijuana, talks about why these effects happen from a cardiovascular status. I'm very willing to share this article with anybody who would like to read it because it's pretty eye-opening. Further research, of course, has to be developed, but I'm just telling you, as a cardiac nurse, I see these complications, and I would like to think that people will inform themselves of the effects of recreational use of marijuana and not just vote without understanding that there are consequences. And this is an excellent article explaining at least the cardiovascular complications that can occur with marijuana use. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Anyone else wishing to make public comments? Supervisor Clendane?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of course, I have. I... You know, this marijuana issue, and I've gotten several phone calls on it myself, and it turned into a political thing. You know, it was voted on, and I'm not standing up here asking you to vote for it or against it, but the idea is that the speaker prior to me voted for this being on the referendum, even turned over the gavel so they could speak on this. Why wasn't this brought up at that time then, if that was so important? I think it's a political stunt, and that's my opinion.
Anyone else wishing to make public comments at this time? Supervisor Durkoo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to commend the vice chair in bringing the medical facts to the forefront, and whether... whatever the reason it is, it doesn't matter. I think people should know the medical facts of marijuana. This is exactly why I voted against resolution, even though it was just advisory. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to make public comments this morning? See none, as we move on. Acknowledgements and recognitions. We have none this morning. We do, however, have one special order of business, and that is a discussion on the strategic planning initiative. So, Vice Chair Roser, you ready?
Nancy's coming up too.
Yes.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At all of your desks, there is a two-page explanation entitled "County Strategic Plan," and by executive vote, I've kind of been helping to lead some of this effort, along with Nancy from the UW Extension at the direction of the Executive Committee. So Nancy, you come on up here, and I'm just going to talk a little bit about why we decided to do this. I'm not going to read this to you, because you're certainly capable of doing this, but you know, we're looking at like 10, 20 years in the future. What would we like our county to look like? Sometimes, if you don't have a goal to aim at, then you're just kind of spinning your wheels and going along. Those of us that are policymakers at this point in time are looking to leave a legacy. You know, we want to leave the county in maybe even better shape than we found it when we got here, but we need some direction to do that, and that's what strategic planning is all about. So, the whys of strategic planning, it's just direction. What... And we're trying to get input from everybody that we possibly can as to what you would like to see the county look like long-term. So, this is a slide that just tells you why we are pursuing a strategic plan. We're working really hard to get each individual department to define missions and values. Some departments have already done an excellent job of doing that, and so we're trying to ask other department heads to do that. So, the strategic plan provides that common vision. I hope that we all believe that we're on the same team for the same dream. I'd like for us to have a common vision where we can agree on where we would like our county headed, but we need input from staff, stakeholders, and elected officials, and that's where we come in. So, the purpose of the survey that we're going to present to you is to identify pertinent needs for county response. How are we going to respond to needs, present needs, future needs, short-term planning, long-term planning? And that's why we want to consider current and projected conditions that the county might find itself in, okay? So, this is just a proposed strategic plan development. Today, we're coming to you for supervisor input, and Nancy is going to talk about the surveys that we have developed that will get you the ability to have input into what you believe the county should look like. Then we're going to move to a draft county mission and vision strategic plan. We're going to have a discussion with department heads and county board supervisors, and then hopefully, we're going to move toward a county vision and mission strategic plan. So, that's kind of the timeline and the process. So, Nancy is going to come and talk... Well, I guess this is still my slide, so I need to talk about what we're going to do. So, we're going to start with a survey that Nancy's going to explain to you how to access and how to input, and then we want those responses by a certain time. Then depending on those responses, we're going to move to a second survey to try to hone in a little bit on what we see broad-picture-wise. So, we're going to identify core values. What do you see as values that should drive this county in serving not only the people of Wood County, but our employees and even those in the surrounding areas? So, there'll be questions that pull that in. Then we're going to ask your opinion about what you think the mission of a strategic plan should be, and then we're looking to develop some guiding principles and mission from the survey responses. These things will go to the Executive Committee first. We will refine the responses that we get from the first and second survey, and then there will be a presentation to the full county board as to what those are. So, Nancy's been working with department heads, and she will give you a little information about where that discussion is going, and then the logistics of the survey. Great.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So, strategic planning often is done by counties from kind of a bottom-up process where you get a lot of input from citizens. That goes into county comprehensive plans, and then the county itself combines the comprehensive plans to come up with a county plan. So, you get lots of opinions coming in. Seeing that our planning and zoning department is in the midst of helping municipalities develop their comp plans, we are recommending this other approach until the county comp plan is updated. So, in about five years, you probably want to revisit the strategic plan and look at the county comp plan and redevelop it that way. So, to get the most opinions, we're looking at involving you, as Supervisor Rosar spelled out, and then department heads. So, each of the departments, or the majority of departments, have some sort of vision, mission, core values, and strategic goals identified. You find many of them on their websites. Some of the departments have chosen to take this opportunity to update these elements and kind of talk about where are they at, where are they moving forward, do they need to change what they have identified in the past as strategic goals, and so on. And so, they're working on that right now, and once we get your input, we will gather the department heads and their contributions utilizing their department's strategic goals is to identify a county vision and make recommendations for the strategic goals for the county. So, when we're talking strategic goals, we're not talking a thick plan that covers all elements of the county. It's what are the five or six strategic goals that the majority of departments need to work on together to be a successful county, right? So, I'm anticipating that that meeting will take place in March or April. I'm cognizant of the fact that many of the departments get very busy when the snow melts, and so we're trying to time things accordingly. Okay. So, the finalization of the plan is kind of an integration of county board supervisor recommendations, department head recommendations, and Supervisor Rosar and I will do the brunt of the sorting and sifting to identify priorities and bring that to Executive Board. But we are proposing a combined meeting with all the supervisors and department heads so that they can discuss why these strategic goals were identified and how they might play out at a department scale, so that everyone's kind of on board. This structure was done successfully in St. Croix County and Eau Claire County. This is kind of an expedited approach to strategic planning instead of... Many of you have probably been involved in a multiple-year-long drawn-out process, so we're trying to just get a plan underway so you have something to move forward with. Strategic plans pretty much should be revisited at least annually to determine if anything major has changed and become more of a need than what was identified in the strategic goals. So, once the goals are approved by you, the departments will go back and identify whether they have actions that they need to pursue to achieve those goals. Okay. So, we've prepared Survey One for you. So, again, you're going to get two surveys on core values. The first one is open-ended questions, so you can tell us what do you think the core values that the county should be operating under are. And then we will sort through those, take the most popular ones, and develop a survey where you're going to prioritize those core values, so that we can winnow this down and not have a lengthy list of core values. And then the same process will occur with missions. So, you'll get a survey, open-ended, please don't be too lengthy, no. And what you see is the mission, will winnow that down to the most common responses, and then again, you'll have an opportunity to prioritize those. So, I did bring some paper copies. All of you will get an email that has a link to a Survey Monkey survey, so you can just input your responses into that, and that will compile your data for us. If you're not comfortable with electronic devices, I have paper copies, and a staff person will input your data into the electronic form. So, I think that's about it, and we're happy to take any questions. Yes?
What I see missing in Wood County here, what I do... See, American County, I take Highway 29. We come again, the small community, we have a big sign on the side of the road, "Welcome to Wizzie, Welcome to Athens, Abbotsford and Athens." They kind of show sometimes what they specialize in. We're welcoming the people into Wood County, what American County has, which is signed by a city. All these cities, American County, you got to read four signs, "Welcome there," and "We welcome American City." And we haven't had since in Wood County. We welcome the people when they come into town.
Thank you.
In 2015 to 2020, if you looked on the internet, Wood County has a strategic plan. Do you know about that? And in 2018, every year, they did do that. So, what happens to that plan? And Sue from the Health Department is the one that starts out with the ultimate letter on it. So, why has that just went by its wayside, and now we're going to start another one?
The purpose of doing this, Supervisor Clendane, is to have a collaborative discussion so that we can bring specific department plans and everything kind of under the same core values and mission, so that we're all working off of a document with a common goal. And the Health Department has done a marvelous job with their strategic planning, and Nancy alluded to the strategic plan. Is that a... Jason, you might know the answer to this question. Is that a Wood County strategic plan that Bill is referring to that's on the county website?
I'm not aware of any counties...
No, I wasn't either. So...
That's the Health Department.
Yes, okay. So, the purpose of doing this with department heads and the county board supervisors is then to develop a county umbrella, so that then department heads can have input and look at their strategic plans and make sure that we are all on the same page as to what our goals are as a county and then as specific departments. So, I think that the long-term plan is, is for each department head then to look at their strategic plans and make sure that they are in alignment with what we end up doing as a county. Maybe something needs to be added to that, that we've identified as a core value that maybe is not on the department head's strategic plan, but the purpose of a county strategic plan is to provide an umbrella under which then the departments develop their strategic plan to carry out what we have identified as common core values and mission and vision as a county. Would you agree with that, Nancy?
Absolutely. So, one of the reasons that we structured the process the way we did was to enable folks like Sue to bring her department plan into this process at the front end, so that we are considering the elements and the strategies that all the department heads have thought about over the years. So, this isn't independent of those plans, it'll be an accumulation of them.
Supervisor Durkoo has a question.
Thank you. I'm 100% behind the idea of developing a strategic plan. My only question is, what's the hurry? It seems like if we're talking about a strategic plan that's supposed to guide us for the next 20 years, you know, being in a hurry to get the process done is not helpful, and I'm not so sure, you know, that's going to develop the kind of strategies and goals that they're looking for.
Sure. So, while we went to look 20 years out, we certainly don't assume that you're going to develop, or that one should develop, a plan that is solid for 20 years, okay? So, the timeframe on here is probably about five years until the comp plans are updated, then revisit the situation and look at whether other strategies have bubbled out from those comp plans from the municipalities. And they should be... You should update a strategic plan and revisit it annually as well. So, it's kind of an ongoing process. There's no start or end date. This is just get the ball rolling in a solid fashion and then move forward iteratively from there.
I'm glad to see this is going to happen, because I've been involved with a couple, one at the ADRC, we had one that we went through. It took about two years to finally get it to roll into the way it is now. Marshfield tried it. We spent two years as a council working on a strategic plan. We did turn it over to our department heads. They brought it back, and we approved it. Starting where you're starting is the right way to go. Let the department heads bring it in, get our ideas, because we spent two years, and we're just spinning our wheels. It took us five meetings to get a mission statement, and they came across real quick. So, I think it's a good idea, and you're right. Every year, I think ADRC looks at theirs every two years. So, if it's for 20 years, you're going to change it in 20 years. So, I think I commend you for doing that, and I'm welcome to do it. When we first talked about the strategic plan six months ago, I thought, oh God, this is a long process. This is the right way to go. Thank you.
So, if there aren't any other questions, I guess my role in this is just to encourage the county board supervisors to please respond to this survey. If you notice that we would like for you to respond based on constituent opinions, not really your personal opinion, even though you do represent... You know, you are an individual who represents constituents, but think about what you've heard in your district and the kind of things that you've heard that your constituents would be interested in seeing regarding a county strategic plan. So, Nancy and I are available to answer any questions. I will hold those, because Nancy needs to get back to work. And so, if anybody wants one of these paper copies, and you may even want to look at a paper copy prior to when the survey comes, so that you have an idea of how you're going to answer the survey electronically. So, of course, we'll be here, and just approach me, and I'll hand you a hard copy at the end of the meeting, and please ask any questions that you think of as the time goes on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That will get us into the packet. We have no referrals this month. Meeting minutes from the Executive Committee are on pages eight through 13. County Clerk's Report on Page 14. Finance Director, Pages 15 through 27. Human Resources, Pages 28 through 33. IT 34 through 36. Maintenance Department Report, Pages 37 through 39. Prejudice Report on Page 40. And that will bring us to our first five resolutions, which I believe we can probably take as one. Can we do that? Without objection, we'll take the five together. And I would ask the clerk to read those, please.
So, we'll start on page 41 with Item 1-1, which will become Resolution Number 19-2-1. To amend the 2019 budget to include monies that were budgeted in 2018 for business continuity and citrix upgrades, updates, but were not used during this budget cycle. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The monies were budgeted... The monies were budgeted and were moved to fund balance at the end of 2018. The monies will be expended in 2019. The adjustment to the budget totals $191,000. The next page is Resolution 19-2-2. To centralize administration of Wood County's printer and copier fleet. Fiscal note, to transfer $39,629 from department budgets and available funds in contingency to IT. At the time of this request, the funds in available contingency are $450,000. The adjustment to the budget totals $39,629. Page 44 will become Resolution 19-2-3. To amend the 2019 budget for Edgewater Maintenance Function for the purpose of funding the capital purchase necessary to replace a failing fire alarm system. Fiscal note, to transfer $49,143.87 from available balance in contingency to the Edgewater Maintenance Function. At the time of this request, the funds available in contingency are $450,000. The adjustment to the budget totals $49,143.87. Page 45, item 1-4 becomes Resolution Number 19-2-4. To amend the 2019 budget for land and water conservation function for the purpose of funding Great Plains 10-foot no-till drill. Fiscal note, to transfer $8,500 from available balance in contingency to the Wood County Land and Water Conservation Department Function. At the time of this request, the funds available in contingency are $450,000. The adjustment to the budget totals $8,500. Page 46 will become Resolution 19-2-5. To amend the 2019 budget for Land and Water Conservation Department Function for the purpose of funding a countywide nitrate sampling effort of private wells on a predetermined grid of one well per section in all 22 townships and county. The Land and Water Conservation Department will generate a mail list to offer sampling to predetermined well owners. Fiscal note, to transfer $8,280 from available balance in contingency to the Wood County Land and Water Conservation Department Function. At the time of this request, the funds available in contingency are $450,000. The adjustment to the budget totals $8,280.
Motion by Hamilton. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Lotmontane. We have a motion on the floor and seconded to approve all five resolutions. Is there any discussion on those resolutions? Supervisor Clendini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to hold out page 45 on a no-till drill. I have some questions on it, if that's possible, or make my comments here now on it, but it's a flat rate. Flat vote if you mean on all of them.
Peter, can we do that? The resolution is going to throw up the number and not really, but.
Just talk about.
Okay, so we are holding page 45, Resolution 1.
So ignore Resolution 19-2-4 because it's not going to be 19-2-4. 19-2-5 will become 19-2-4.
If they continue, on the remaining, on the remaining resolutions, we keep saying it's $450,000. What is it if we, if we do all four of these, now what is in the contingency? Anybody have that?
Marley, do you have that figured out?
That's $346,600. Maybe all four of them, there's 364, 265 left.
354?
64.
364 left, okay. That answer your question?
Yeah, yes, thank you.
What is your vote on?
That was going to be my comment, you know, the contingency funds could be hit and this is only February. And so that's my concern and I'm not disagreeing that these projects are not worthy, but I think we are going to have to remember that this is only February and we've got a hit to our contingency funds. So we're going to have to be very wise as we move through the rest of the year about projects because it wouldn't be unreasonable for some horrible thing to happen that we absolutely have to tap that fund in order to be, Marley seems to be wanting to say something to my comment, but we're just going to have to watch it. That's my only thing is that we are aware of what's going to happen to the contingency funds when I think these most worthy projects pass.
Supervisor Clendini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was the one that come up with the idea of the no-till drill because we have these fossil problems in the Mill Creek area and we hope to keep some stuff on the ground and we will put the dirt ground that that buffer washes into the Mill Creek. And we can't wait until October, November because we need it in spring. We're going to, any good other than summer, we have to have an hour. There's a one way of helping the water, Wood County, and getting the flosses out of Mill Creek every afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now we are going back and voting on the four resolutions. Why is it the, for lack of a better term, because I can't remember the number anymore, but it's the no-till drill. So we are pulling the no-till drill, so we will be voting. Peter, how does the motion apply then? Do we have to go back and, okay. So we have a motion on the floor and seconded to approve the four resolutions that we're speaking of. Is there any further discussion on those resolutions? See none? Please vote. And those four resolutions pass unanimously, which brings us back to the no-till drill, which is now, do you want to reread that? As you didn't remember.
Sure. So item 1-4, which was on page 45, is going to become Resolution 19-2-5. To amend the 2019 budget for Land and Water Conservation Department Function for the purpose of funding Great Plains 10-foot no-till drill. Fiscal note, to transfer $8,500 from available balance in contingency to Wood County Land and Water Conservation Department Function. At the time of this request, the funds available in contingency are $450,000. The adjustment to the budget totals $8,500.
Motion to approve by Clendini, seconded by Hamilton. We have a motion in the floor and seconded to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion concerning that resolution? Supervisor Clendini.
I just feel that this resolution has three things in it. And I kind of don't like, one of the things is that they're getting to, you know, I don't know the proper word for it, but because they sold those tree planters, they get to keep that money. And usually that's a resolution that comes before and in doing things like that. But the other thing is, is, you know, I've dealt with things like this. I think now we're going to become a place that's going to be able to rent things out, tillers, you know what I mean? But this happens to be a no-till drill. And do we have the personnel for that? What about if somebody gets hurt on that piece of equipment? I used to work for an implement company and they used to do these things. They used to put these kind of no-till drills or set things like that out, four-bottom flouts back in then, and they would put them out as tests and they would pay farmers to use them and give their opinion. And I would have thought that an implement dealer could furnish this, but, and I voted for this to come out of the contingency fund, is the fact that the incentive could be that you would have to apply to get one of these from a dealer and we would pay some money for it. No, it would be it. I just wish before we rent out our first one that we definitely have something all planned out about how we're going to do that. I don't like us getting into the rental business. If the highway department's got an old mower there, they should be able to rent it out now because we don't use it anymore and the procedure you have to go through. I just thought this should have been thought out a little more, but I voted for the resolution to take the money out. So, thank you.
Any other discussion on the board? See none? Please go to the board and vote. And that resolution passes 17 to 1. Thank you. Takes us to page 48 for the Health and Human Services Committee Minutes on pages 48 through Health Department, pages 52 through 55. Human Services, 56 through 61. Edgewater on page 62. Veterans, 63 and 64. Vice Chair, roll down.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to go back to the Edgewater Haven comments for just a minute. These narratives have such good information and I hope you all are taking the time, but I would like to just personally acknowledge Cindy, the Administrator, and Jordan certainly has been involved in some of that and now Edgewater Haven is under the umbrella of the Human Services. So there's a lot of collaboration now since we have a nursing home license at the Wood County Annex in Norwood Health Center and a nursing home license at Edgewater Haven. I think that most of you all have seen that Bethel Nursing Home is closing in Arben and some of us fought really hard to keep a nursing home at the county level and I think that we're seeing as time marches on the need to have a nonprofit nursing home. And our current administration is to be highly commended for what they've been doing there. As you saw in the productive, the Traumatic Brain Injury Unit is now going to be down at Edgewater Haven. Most TBI units are in long-term nursing home facilities and not in mental health institutions. So that was a really good move and I think that that's going to be a wonderful transition for that unit. So don't, I don't want to in any way underestimate what is happening in that facility. It is being well managed, it's being well cared for, the residents have a good experience and we just need to let people know that we have a stellar facility in this county to support aging individuals in our area. So thank you for everything that you have done and I certainly appreciated this chair of that Oversight Committee. Thank you.
Public Safety on pages 65 through 74, two different meetings there, December 10th to January 14th, Minutes. Coroner's Report, pages 75 through 77. Human Officer, pages 78 through 81. Various Sheriff's Department Reports on pages 82 through 92. Which brings us to our now sixth resolution and I will ask the clerk to read that.
This will be Resolution 19-2-6. To amend the 2019 budget to include monies that were budgeted in 2018 for microwave replacements, but were not used during that budget cycle. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. The monies were budgeted and were moved to fund balance at the end of 2018. The monies will be expended in 2019. The adjustment to the budget totals $225,000.
Motion by Hamilton, seconded by Zerfle. We have a motion in on the floor and seconded to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion concerning that resolution? See none? Please vote. And that passes 18 to nothing. Which brings us to our next resolution, also brought by Public Safety, and I would ask the clerk to read that, please.
This will be Resolution 19-2-7. To grant a political leave of absence to Wood County Sheriff Sean Becker for the term of January 7, 2019 through January 2, 2023. Fiscal note, none.
Motion by Zerfle, seconded by Bragg. We have a motion on the floor and seconded to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion concerning that motion? Supervisor Clendini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Public Safety Committee has voted on this to send the sheriff on this convention.
Long resolution.
Sorry, resolution. And I would just urge everybody to vote on this, just for the simple reason of what it says here. He's going to get a lot of knowledge out of this and it should help the county quite a bit. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the resolution? See none? Please vote. And that resolution passes unanimously. Page 95 for our next resolution, also concerning the sheriff and brought by the Public Safety Committee. I would ask the clerk to read that as well.
This will be Resolution 19-2-8. To authorize out-of-state training and travel for the sheriff. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The training and associated expenses, including travel, lodging and meals, will be paid for by the National Institute of Corrections.
Motion by Hamilton, seconded by Professor Fisher. We have a motion on the floor and seconded to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion regarding that resolution? See none? And that resolution passes unanimously as well. Page 96, seat committee minutes, pages 96 through 106. Land and Water Conservation, 107 through 113. Planning and zoning, 114 to 124. UW Extension, pages 125 through 128. More from planning and zoning on pages 129 through 131. Which brings us to our final resolution brought by the seat committee and I would ask the clerk to read that.
This will be Resolution 19-2-9. To approve a zoning amendment to the Town and Marshall zoning map. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The Town and Marshall is responsible for any costs associated with administering their town zoning ordinance.
Motion by Hamilton, seconded by Marley. We have a motion in on the floor and seconded to approve the resolution. Is there any discussion regarding that resolution? Any discussion? See none? And that resolution is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Page 133, Minutes from Judicial Legislative, on pages 133 through 138. Departmental Reports for J&amp;L go from pages 139 through 146. HERC Minutes, pages 147 through 155. Departmental Reports for HERC go from pages 156 to 168. Central Wisconsin State Fair Minutes, page 169. Various Library Board Minutes, pages 170 through 175. Minutes of the University Commission on pages 176 through 177. Questions? Okay. That brings us to the end of our regular packet. The rest of the packet has to do with our appeal process this morning, our complaint resolution process. And before we start that, I would ask if anyone has any questions on the procedure we will follow for this. Any questions from the board? If none, we will move into that procedure and I would ask that Attorney Arnt come forward. You guys can both speak from the podium up here, please. And the floor is yours. Pray me on it. You have five minutes, sir. Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning, George.
As elected officials, you have a duty to enact and oversee the administration of county operations. As a board, you delegate those duties to subordinates. And the board relies upon law, policy and the faithful administration of your subordinates to perform county operations. As a board, you delegate those duties to subordinates, and the board relies upon law, policy, and the faithful administration of your subordinates to perform county operations. If the law's not followed, or the policy's ignored, or the administration not effective or candid, governance is corrupted. I do not have time to address each and every issue raised by my client, Kristy Doer, related to my board appeal letter on the reasons why I believe she was wrongfully terminated. So I'll reference just a few examples. First, it was alleged that my client didn't get along with other employees. Certain fellow employees and supervisors sought foster care licensing and awards of kinship care, financial aid, contrary to state law and regulation. Ms. Doer refused to ignore the state law and the state regulation. The affected employees and supervisors who were denied these benefits believe that Ms. Doer's decision was motivated not by following the law or the regulations, but by personal animus. My client pointed to the specific law and the specific policy, which did not allow her for discretionary approval, and she was ignored. When these issues were brought to the state of Wisconsin's attention, county employees were retrained by the state so that the employees would follow the law. The county in its termination told my client she failed to see the big picture, and that she just wouldn't get along. The county fired my client because she failed to ignore the law at the county's request. Second, during my, during Ms. Doer's employment, my client was systematically harassed by fellow supervisors. Ms. Doer complained, my client supervisor allowed the harassment to persist. After her termination, your Human Resources Department reviewed my client's specific complaints as they related to the broad definition of harassment that is contained in your Wood County harassment policy. My client takes three issues with that review. First, the Wood County failed to evaluate the complaint against the actual Wood County harassment policy. They used some other policy. Second, at the independent hearing, no witness took responsibility for the truthfulness of the content in the county's reply. Your, your packet contains a copy of the county reply. No witness took responsibility for that content. Third, I was denied the opportunity at the independent hearing to reference a written findings made by your own attorneys that demonstrated a pattern of harassing behavior by the supervisor my client complained about. The county's position regarding that, that other supervisor's bullying behavior somehow doesn't square with the county's complaint of my client being harassed. The county fired my client because the county ignored its own policy on harassment and only made a superficial inquiry into the alleged harassment. Third, my Kristy Doer supervisor made baseless claims against my client. She stated Ms. Doer had teased to a foster parent's home and distributed a hit list to her subordinates, county employees, to avoid or undermine. All untrue, all admitted by the county to be untrue after my client's termination of employment. During her employment, my client protested her innocence. During this, during this Doer's employment, her supervisor complained about my client's arrogance and not admitting to these false accusations. The supervisor alleging these purported facts never talked to the foster parents, never questioned the subordinates this hit list was supposedly distributed to, and, and never saw such a hit list. Now, your counsel, in their reply to you, that's included in your packet, asked you to ignore these facts, is irrelevant, because after Ms. Doer's termination, the county now admits it was wrong. Can you imagine someone telling you that you've broken into somebody's house or distributed a hit list, and you argue against that, and then are constantly criticized for not accepting the facts, and then, oh goodness, we found out after the fact that we were wrong, so it doesn't make any difference about your termination? Just trust us. We did terminate you for that particular reason. The county fired my client because the county slandered my client, and she didn't like it, and the county lacks candor.
That was five minutes, Mr. Arn. Can you wrap it up quickly?
Yes. My client was fired for failing to see the big picture and failing to get along with employees. The department's big picture is horrifying. It allows the department to ignore state law and the policies you pass. It doesn't faithfully follow the administration or that is either reasonable or truthful. The department's not candid with you, and it fails to protect children. My client asked, believes that because of this corrupting effect, that she was wrongfully terminated, and believes that you should consider that termination to have been wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Human Resources Director, Laura Necht. We have five minutes. Please sit down.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to represent Wood County in Ms. Doer's appeal of her termination. I'd like to redirect us to the facts in this case. Ms. Doer's employment was terminated after she progressed through the county's disciplinary process. After a six-month process, she was terminated essentially for two reasons. Her social work philosophy differed from that of the counties, and her inability to contribute to a harmonious work environment. Ms. Doer's social work practice was inconsistent. There were several examples of this brought to her attention over time, and she failed to make changes. She had a reliance, an overreliance on termination of parental rights. Her supervisor, who was the Division Administrator of Family Services, repeatedly asked Ms. Doer to complete comprehensive and thorough investigations before bringing forward her recommendations. Ms. Doer had a tendency to focus on one facet of her review and not take into account the entire situation and make a recommendation on all merits. No one asked Ms. Doer to ignore any laws. Ms. Doer created a poor work environment for staff. There were several complaints received during Ms. Doer's employment of unprofessional conduct and undermining other managers of supervision. The department received several requests from staff to move away from being under Ms. Doer's direct employment or supervision, and at least one employee cited in her exit interview, her reason for leaving Wood County was directly due to Ms. Doer. Overall, it was a troubling environment for staff to work in. More importantly is the fact that Ms. Doer was employed in the capacity of a resource unit supervisor. She was a member of the Human Services Supervisory Team, and as a member of that management team, it was her responsibility to take an active role in creating a collaborative work environment, foster positive relations, and treat all staff, subordinates, and peers respectfully, and she failed to do that. Working in a department every day that works with our community members to make positive changes, to self-reflect on their own behaviors for positive outcomes, it's troubling to me, as it was to Ms. Doer's supervisor, that she was unable to do that. During the six months that she was placed on a performance improvement plan, Ms. Doer attended weekly supervision meetings with her supervisor. She was often argumentative in those meetings. Both Ms. Doer's supervisor and the acting department head who oversaw the progressive discipline noted that she often did not take responsibility or accountability for her actions, and she was often disrespectful towards them despite their efforts to help her. This is simply not appropriate in a professional setting, especially for a member of our management team. We talk quite a bit about being an employer of choice, and a critical component of being a premium employer in this local area is having a respectful, positive, and collaborative work environment. Ms. Doer's supervisor attempted to coach and mentor her for six months with no change in her behavior. Wood County acted appropriately in addressing Ms. Doer's performance deficiencies. The county followed all of its policies, practices, and procedures. All concerns and complaints were investigated fully, and her termination was a direct impact of her social work philosophy being misaligned with the county's and her inability to contribute to a harmonious work environment. For these reasons, I respectfully ask that you affirm the decision of the independent hearing officer and uphold the termination. Thank you.
Thank you. I would remind the board that we have three options here. We can uphold, modify, or overturn the decision by the independent hearing officer, and at this time, I would open up the floor for discussion. Any discussion? Supervisors, or for...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, I would like to ask Attorney Arn, you may, I can't answer.
Supervisor Fisher, we are not allowed to ask any questions. We have to go from our knowledge of what we're given to us in the pack.
Okay. I stand corrected.
This is our discussion amongst the board.
Okay. I stand corrected.
Any other discussion? Supervisor Clendane.
I noticed a number of redactions. Why were all redacted? Why were all names redacted? I would see there was some in there. Or is there a problem with not redacting some of those?
I cannot answer that. I'm not sure that anyone can answer that. Peter, can you weigh in on that? Or we can't go there. I'm sorry. The process doesn't allow it. Any other comments, discussion from the board? If not, I would entertain some kind of motion. We'll forward it. Supervisor Fisher.
I will make a motion to affirm the decision.
We have a motion to, is that a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Supervisor Holbrook. We have a motion on the floor and seconded to uphold the decision by the independent hearing officer. I hope this is right. We will vote in the board. Thank you. Yes, vote is to uphold the decision. The decision of the independent hearing officer is upheld 15 to 3. Thank you. Thank you, both parties. And that brings us to the official end of the entire packet. Is there anything else that needs to come before this body this morning? Anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Hamilton, LaMontaigne. Or David German, engaged by, say, "aye"?
Aye.
Or say no. Thank you.